Twenty at 6:00 P. M. If we could, please have the clerk take the roll.
Councilmember Henry is absent. Councilmember Hulse?
Here.
Councilmember Howdige is absent. Councilmember Narin?
Here.
Councilmember Wildon?
Here.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Here.
Mayor Olinsky?
Here, thank you. All right, please stand and join me in the pledge. All right, next on the agenda is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Do we have any council members with anything to report? Okay. I'll just report, it was last week, I believe, that we met with OTA, members of the Old Town Association, to discuss some, you know, concerns as we try to plan our fall. Obviously, there's a lot of, you know, pressure to get some events coming in for the fall, but we did express to them that we're just a little bit hesitant, this council at least. I'm bringing some larger groups up here, but we're all ears as far as how to do smaller events safely here in our community. And our weekly task force meetings, our economic development, or excuse me, economic recovery task force meetings have been going well. The numbers are starting to taper off a bit, but we're getting a lot of good, call it synergy, from the groups on the call, and folks are really helping assist one another, so it's good to see. And the numbers, of course, are going down as far as infection rates, so we're definitely on the right track. And that's it.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you. To follow up on the meeting with the OTA, just so councils aware, we plan to come back at the work session in September with a marketing plan. We have, are in the process of signing up with the Arizona Office of Tourism this month. The applications are due. We are our own DMO, our designated marketing organization, so we're moving forward with that. We are wrapping up the contract with the Chamber of Commerce, and we'll get that going, and begin to talk about the joint work session that we've talked about between the Chamber and City Council sometime in the fall or spring, and just some other things. So Chamber and the city, we're working very well together, things are going great. If this group hasn't heard, Jennifer Wessenhoff from the Chamber in Sedona is moving to Park City. She's got a significant, what I call a promotion, I think it's a loss for the Verde Valley. She's a great partner and a leader in all the marketing and tourism and Chamber business in the community, so it's going to be some big shoes to fill, but it was sad to hear that she had accepted that job. In addition to the phone call today with our business partners and our community partners on our recovery task force, I wanted to let council know, if you hadn't heard, that our city staff continues to work with both Cottonwood Oak Creek and Mingus High School. We are providing some part-time help to manage things on their campuses, so we actually, you know, we don't have our youth programming going right now, our parks and rec is at a minimal, but we have our part-time employees that are helping out those two local school districts, so very excited about that. We also allow some of them to use some of our facilities. So Cottonwood Oak Creek set up a program for families who don't have access to Wi-Fi, and they're using some of our facilities to help educate those kids who don't have other opportunities. So I say that not to brag about the city, but the creativity at both of our schools, both Mingus High School District and Cottonwood Oak Creek, fabulous leaders doing the right thing to make sure that our children get the education that they deserve, and it's just exciting to partner with those two entities and help them move forward. I do have a couple other announcements. We, the city, will be hosting another blood drive on September 8th from 10 to 3:00 at the Cottonwood Public Safety Building. If you wish to donate, please register ahead of time at the redcrossblood.org. The Old Town Cruise Night is back, so the Old Town Car Cruise Night next will be this Saturday, August 22nd from 6:00 to 8:00. All types of vehicles are welcome, and spectators are encouraged. The city has partnered again with the Old Town Association for a safe event promoting shop local and support businesses while having fun. The Mingus Union High School swim program will resume practices at the outdoor pool on Monday, August 24th. While this is good, because practices are going to be held there from 3:00 to 5:00, it's going to reduce our open lap swim a little bit, and so open lap swim hours will be adjusted and moved to 10:30 to 11:00 a.m., noon to 3:00, and then 5:00 to 7:00 on weekdays. Via a CARES Act grant, the Cottonwood Public Library received five Wi-Fi hotspots units, and they can be checked out for 24 hours at a time for those families or people needing a hotspot, so thank you, the library, for doing that. And on a side note, Cottonwood Oak Creek needed hotspots for families who couldn't afford Wi-Fi, and the Chamber was able to get a grant for multi-thousands of dollars to finish getting all the hotspots Cottonwood Oak Creek School District needed, so another shout-out to the Chamber there. And that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, very good, thank you. All right, next up on the agenda is approval of minutes, and I would go ahead and motion to approve the regular meeting of August 4, 2020, the work session of August 11, 2020, and the special meeting of August 11, 2020.
Second.
All right, Mayor, may the motion, Councilmember Wildon seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? All right, minutes are approved. Now we roll into the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. And tonight, we have seven items on the consent agenda, I'll go ahead and read them out, and if there's any council member or citizen that would like to have an item pooled, please let me know. First, item one is cooperative use of the City of Peoria Job Order Contract Number P-18-0044 with Showfield Civil Construction to provide construction services at Lift Station 4. Item two is request for sole source purchasing exemption under Section 6, Paragraph C of the Procurement Code to utilize Alliance Service and Control Specialists for programming, integration, support, and installation of the control technologies for the utility department. Item three is an addendum to Joint Defense Agreement for Water Adjudication. Item four is remote tasting room liquor license application submitted by John McLaughlin, owner agent for Cellar 433 in Old Town by 21 Grams located at 909 A North Main Street. Item five is approval of bid and award of contract to Mulcare and Sun Contracting LLC for the construction of the north Old Town Alley improvements and acceptance of a drain adjustment from Cashmere Properties LLC. Item six is Resolution Number 3069, appointing members to the city's municipal property corporation, and item seven, Resolution Number 3066, and Resolution Number 3067, appointing members to the airport commission. Is there an item that council member would like to have pooled, or member of the public? Okay.
Move to approve the consent agenda. Second.
All right, Vice Mayor made the motion, and Councilmember Hulse seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, the consent agenda is approved. If we could have the clerk please read Resolutions Number 3069, 3066, and 3067 by title only.
Resolution Number 3069, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing members to the city's municipal property corporation. Resolution Number 3066, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, appointing Tim Peebler, a member of the Cottonwood Airport Commission, and establishing his term of office. Resolution Number 3067, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, appointing William Hallier, a member of the Cottonwood Airport Commission, and establishing his term of office. Mr. Mayor.
Very good, thank you. Okay, new business is up next. The following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. First up tonight is Resolution Number 3065, correcting and amending the city's commercial wastewater rates. Evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Kirsten Lennon, I am the Finance Services Director here for the city, and tonight I'm presenting to you Resolution 3065, correcting and amending the city's commercial wastewater rates. The city currently charges four separate rates for residential and for commercial. There are an administrative rate, a depreciation rate, an operations and maintenance rate, and a debt service rate. For residential, it's a flat fee for all four. For commercial, it's based on water consumption for two of the rates. The water consumption, as it is currently adopted, says that we charge based on per thousand gallons of water used, and this was amended back in 2013, and not intentionally. I think that the wording got changed to per thousand gallons, when it really was being billed at per 5,000 gallons of water used, and so it never got changed in our software system. And at that time, they just kept getting charged for the per 5,000 gallons, and it's been that way until this current rate change, when I looked at the rates and realized that they were wrong, and they weren't based on what had been adopted by council. Council had adopted the per thousand gallons for those two rates, and I changed it, and that became very large billings. They were 500 times more than they had been before. So we did some research and looked back at the rates and realized that that wording change probably was not the intention at that time, it really should have stayed at the per 5,000 gallons, because when we did our calculations, everything we budgeted was only by the small percentage increase that we had presented to council from the rate studies. So there was no anticipation that those rates would go up by that such a large dollar value. So at this time, I'd like to get Resolution 3065 adopted, amending those consumption rates back to the per 5,000 gallons. It's the same rate that was adopted before, it's just that consumption wording from per thousand to per 5,000, and then we won't be charging such hard, large bills to all the commercial customers. We will also do an amendment to those billings to make sure that that's what we're charging them, and that's the first issue. And then there was a small error this last year, when the rates were changed in October, we didn't change the rate behind the consumption, and so we lost out on approximately $100,000 in billings that would have been billed from October to June. At this time, I'm not recommending that we go back and charge people for that, considering the times that we're in with COVID and businesses being closed, that could be a burden on them. But I'm open for any questions.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Lennon?
Yeah, so the first thing you were talking about, so we have overbilled our commercial customers?
We only, from July until today.
So what are we doing for them?
And so we haven't overbilled them based on the rates that were adopted, but once we amend the rates back to what they should be at the 5,000, per 5,000 gallons, we'll adjust those billings back to the per 5,000 gallons, so that they have an amended bill.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Narin, we also asked them not to pay that portion of their bill. We did not ask anybody to meet the 500% increase that was presented there, so there was a paragraph or a page on the back page explaining that pay all the other parts of the bill, but not this one. And there will be no penalty, we'll get everything right in the next month, the bills were supposed to go out today, but we're waiting to see what council does tonight, and then we'll address it and send the next billing cycle tomorrow.
So nobody has paid the extra rate yet?
And some may have paid it, and we will just give them a credit on their bill.
When does this go into effect, if approved?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Wildon, July 1st is what we were hoping for, if I remember correctly, for this set of rates, Mr. Horton, I think that's what we talked about?
Right, and, but the resolution is effective tonight when you adopt it.
All right, we did receive one request to speak on this item from Lisa Peterson, and if there's any other folks in the audience tonight that would like to address council on this item, you're more than welcome to fill out a yellow form, and we'll get you up here to the podium, so, Ms. Peterson, are you with us this evening? They're going to run out and grab her, just a second here. Are you, Ms. Peterson? Sorry that we, we just sort of had a brief discussion, and I know you wanted to speak on this item, I thought you were in the council chambers, I'm sorry about that.
No, unfortunately not, so I got some of that, being on the Facebook page, but I didn't get all of it. So I am hoping, what I got was that it's being addressed. I'm assuming that everyone understands that during this pandemic, that the businesses that are going to be bearing the brunt of that increase are at 50% occupancy, if not even able to be open, and yet, you know, water is still being used, sewer is still being used, and going from a 40 cent ratio, you know, a dollar for every water we spent to 40 cents in sewer, to about a dollar to now $2, $2.20, was a huge, huge influx that none of us were expecting. So I'm assuming that what was addressed earlier, that they're asking if it's adopted tonight, we'll get that corrected. I appreciated the workers saying, you know, pay what you normally pay, however, for those of us that take advantage of the automatic billing, so I'm assuming that if it's adopted, we'll just see the credit on that. What was that?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I can answer that question, absolutely, and if it's a hardship to wait for a credit, depending on how much you paid and you need a refund, reach out to our office and we'll get that taken care of, but we're in agreement with you, we need to fix it, that increase was not planned, that increase was not approved, the total value was not approved by council, the incremental increase was, and that's what we're asking to go back to, is that small amount.
Can you disclose what that small amount was? Was it like a 5%, 10%?
5%.
Okay. That's, I mean, that's why I explained that I've got some of my tenants here with us, we've got multiple commercial properties here, and that was, they're going, wow, we're, you know, struggling to have our doors open, and we get a possibility rate increase, so appreciate you guys addressing that.
We understand, we apologize.
And I apologize, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here this evening, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, if there's nothing else, council, we can open this up for discussion, or entertain a motion?
Make a motion?
Sure.
I move to approve Resolution 3065.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Hulse, oh, I'm so sorry, we have one more. Sir, I don't know if you filled out a form or not, but...
Didn't read my writing.
Oh, okay, that's fine, we limit you to five minutes, and thanks for being here.
Okay, yeah, just real quick, just on the amendment that we're working on, I know I didn't hear everything, maybe if you approved it, then I'm wasting my time, but I'd just like to speak real quick. I own a laundromat here in town, and my bill went up $1,000 a month, and I really don't want to have to pass that on to my customers and explain to them that, you know, this is what happened with our city, and, you know, this is why I have to do that, so I strongly recommend that this gets resolved, you know, immediately, I mean, I was ready to raise prices immediately, because it's like, that's a lot of money, you know? So I'm just asking that, you know, you guys take care of this and revert it back to where it was, because that's a lot of money, you know, especially for small business.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for being here this evening, and I'm sorry, we didn't catch your name, so if you wouldn't mind just letting us know your name, just for the record.
I'm Jason Horton, owner of Super Clean Laundry.
Okay, great, thanks, sir, appreciate it. All right, I apologize, so we had a, Councilmember Hulse made the motion, Councilmember Narin seconded it, if we could have a roll call vote, please. Clerk.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mayor Olinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Very good, if you could read that Resolution 3065 by title only, please?
Resolution Number 3065, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, amending and correcting the city's commercial wastewater rates. Mr. Mayor.
All right, very good, up next is ordinance number 683, amending the zoning ordinance by amending Section 411 AR-43 Zone Agricultural Residential D5, and Section 412 AR-20 Zone Agricultural Residential D5, and this is the first reading, evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm Gary Davis with Community Development, and we have a staff-initiated change to the zoning ordinance that we're proposing for those zones that you mentioned, and it affects the front yard setbacks. Right now, this is a rundown of what our front yard setbacks are in the various residential zones, single-family zones. What we're proposing is in the AR-20 and the AR-43, AR-20 would go to 20 feet, AR-43 would go to 25 feet, and here's our reasoning for that. We have throughout town a number of places where AR-43 and AR-20 exist, or were placed on existing development. The one that just circled there is on Airport Road, there's another, there's some farther south, and then there are AR-20 areas located east of Main Street, on the edge of the city limits there near the river. And a number of those locations were built, were developed before the city even existed, much less zoning existed, and a lot of those areas had houses that were built within, inside the currently approved setbacks. For example, this is the Airport Road, there's about six houses along there, they were built in the, somewhere between the late 20s and 1961, I believe, and they were all built about 25 feet from their front lot line, whereas the zoning currently says the front setback should be 40 feet. So in other words, nobody could add on to the side of their building that's already there within that front setback. Similar situation over here at 17th Street Mingus area, this is AR-20, we have a number of houses that were built in there, pre-zoning, that are within 20, 25 feet of the front lot line. So this is a common enough thing that we felt it was wise to propose reducing those setbacks to allow people a little more flexibility if they want to fix up and add on to their houses, put porches on, things like that. So this went to the Planning and Zoning Commission on July 20th, and they unanimously recommended approval of it. That concludes my presentation, unless you have any questions.
All right, any questions from council? Would you like to see us come back for a second reading?
Yes.
Okay, that seems to make a lot of sense, and I just want to say, I appreciate you guys taking a forward look at these sorts of things and fixing problems as they come up, so thank you. Bring it back for a second reading, and we'll go ahead and have the clerk read ordinance number 683 by title only.
Ordinance Number 683, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the zoning ordinance by amending Section 411 AR-43 Zone Agricultural Residential D5, and Section 412 AR-20 Zone Agricultural Residential D5. Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, up next is item three, request from Eric and Lisa Barowski for the city to annex the Spring Creek Ranch property, 280 acres located south of 89A, approximately 1.5 miles southwest of Page Springs Road, and 20 square miles of Coconino National Forest land between the city and Spring Creek Ranch. Before we begin, I just want to say, I know many in the room are here for this item tonight, there's still many more waiting outside, but this, excuse me, this item is not up for vote tonight, we're going to give staff some direction on which direction council feels they want to move forward. However, I'm eager to hear from you, and you're more than welcome to fill out a yellow form if you haven't already. These are challenging days, as you all know, so we're requiring physical distancing in here, however, we still want to hear from you, so we're going to hear a presentation, we're going to have some discussion, and then we'll open it up for public comment. Now, we have a lot of folks that want to speak tonight, so I'm going to limit folks to two minutes, and I'd like you all to just, if something's already been said, or the point's already been made, just to say, I oppose, or I'm in favor of either the annexation, or, we want to keep this focused really on just what we're discussing tonight, which is the annexation, and not the development, the proposal that they had prior with Yavapai County. The discussion tonight is really going to be focused on the annexation. In addition to that, you can always email us, we've received just today 130 emails, and I haven't been able to read each and every single one of them, I know our manager has somehow, I don't know how, but you're always welcome to email us as well, and all of these are entered into the public record, so it's another great way to communicate with us and get things entered into the public record, so with that being said, go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, Scott Ellis, Community Development Director. Mr. Mayor, as you indicated, this is a proposed annexation for Spring Creek Ranch, brought to us by the owners of Spring Creek Ranch, they approached the city with a request to see if it's something that could be done, which then brings us here tonight in front of council. The Spring Creek Ranch would, itself would be approximately 280 acres of private land, so in order to get that route, to get there, we do have to cross National Forest land. A little correction from what you have in your packets, from the time that these were created and developed and sent to you, we made some adjustments, so it's no longer 20 square miles, it's going to be more 11 square miles, so it reduces it significantly due to some factors that we became aware of. So what you have in your packets, what was written in the conform, has been adjusted to what you see right now, to that 11 square miles instead of 20. The max width cannot be greater than half the length, so in order to meet those legal requirements, we have to go, I'm sorry, let me rephrase that, the length cannot be twice the maximum width. So what you see there on our measurements puts us within that limit.
Mr. Ellis, can you just take a second to point out what the hash lines are, what the solid blue is?
Yes, sorry, Mr. Mayor, the hash lines are what would be the annexation area, it would go out north from the existing city boundary, just to the east of Dead Horse State Park, it would go north across National Forest, then to the east across National Forest, and then down to where the Spring Creek private land is. That larger blue area that you see to the south is all state trust land, we're unable to annex that at this time, however, this annexation, and it'll be a little bit later in the presentation, but I'll go ahead and mention it now, this annexation could set the stage for potentially annexing that state trust land in the future.
And the current municipal boundary is all the gray shaded area, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
This does fit especially where that state land is with our general plan and the Chapter 6 growth area element with potential annexation out that 89A corridor and to the north, northeast, mostly it's referencing the state land, but again, this could help us get to that point. And it does include parts of that 89 and Vine, that potential development out there, which that portion is already annexed, so it is within the city, this just would be one more thing that we present to the state in order to see if they would let us annex that state trust land. That's, again, that blue area that you see right there. So tonight, what we're looking for is council direction, there is a... There is a process to go through the annexation. If you remember, we just recently did one. I'll kind of reiterate what it consists of. So if we get direction from council tonight to move forward, then we obviously will fine-tune the map, make sure we have the legal description, do that kind of behind-the-scenes work, then we file a blank petition with the county, with the map, with the legal decision, description. That then starts a 30-day waiting period. Within that 30-day waiting period, we have to have the public hearing within the last 10 days. And that public hearing is with council, again, to inform you and show you the official annexation area, what was been recorded with the county. And again, lets the public attend that meeting and speak on the annexation if they so desire. After that 30-day waiting period, we would circulate petitions to the owners. We need greater than 50% of the landowners and at least 50% of the valuation of land. In this case, it is Spring Creek Ranch, those owners, and one other owner out there. The city does own one parcel out there, but the rest of it would be National Forest land, which does not require, does not count in this 50%. We would draft an annexation agreement with the owners of Spring Creek Ranch, 10-year service plan that has to do with water service, sewer service, police, fire. That's part of a requirement for the annexation process from the state. If that all goes through, council adopts the annexation agreement, the 10-year service plan, the annexation, and the initial zoning. So the initial zoning would be what we have most comparable to what the current Yavapai County zoning is. We haven't 100% determined that, but from what we have seen, it looks like right now it would be one of our AR zones.
And sir, if you could just go into a little bit of detail for those unaware what AR means?
Yeah, sorry. It's agricultural residential. And we have three different, AR-20, AR-43, and AR-70. It's yet to be determined which one of those that would be. So we're looking potentially between September, December of 2020 for the annexation and the initial zoning, if that were to take place, if everything went through, council adopted it, and everything was approved. After that, if, sorry, I spoke on that. After that, the owner has indicated a mixed-use development, which would indicate a rezone to PAD after the annexation is approved, and they go through that process. They can apply for that zoning. But before that, the zoning has to be what's comparable to the county. This particular request would require a major amendment to the general plan. That in itself is a process that takes some time, has to be presented to council, has to be reviewed, public hearings. That could take anywhere from January to May of 2021. The application and approval for that major amendment has to happen in the same calendar year. That's brought down by ARS. So a request could not be presented now to do it. It had to be in January in order for that to happen. State shared revenue would be increased for the city, sales and rental tax revenue. We look at doing a fire agreement with Verde Valley Fire, if not have our own services out there, that gets to be determined. Same with police services. Again, city planning code enforcement, those types of services available. We would have private, the roads out there would all be private. The development would take on maintenance of that. City's not looking to take over any roads out there. That would be part of the annexation agreement. Water sewer would start private, possibly be transferred over to the city at a later date after development by the owners. And that would prevent individual wells and allow for centralized water system. Again, that could spur the annexation to state trust land. So as I mentioned, the next step is the city staff would file a blank petition and map with the county if council gives us that direction. With that, I can answer any questions. We do have the owner of Spring Creek Ranch here tonight as well.
All right. Questions from council?
Just if you could clarify, maybe if you've got that information on, because a lot of the emails had a lot of misunderstanding on how this might affect the Forest Service lands. And also, what the future of that state trust land looks like, what state trust lands are for, and what's going to happen with those in the future, inevitably at some time?
In regards to the Forest Service land, Mr. Mayor and council, really, nothing changes. It just becomes within our city limits. Forest Service still maintains control over it. We don't have any zoning over it. We don't have any, anything like that. Their federal rules and regulations preempt anything that we would have. The state trust land is, it's really hard to say. They'd be willing to annex it if services are available out there, and it could potentially be developed. The state trust land, as most of you know, is kind of set aside for schools. And so any sale, purchase of it goes into the educational funds. So they do like to see conceptual master plans for anybody who's looking to purchase it, but it is anybody's guess as to what could happen to it.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add just a couple items to that. So the National Forest, I also read those emails. They were worried about development or the change in the beautiful view of our National Forest. That's not going to happen. That is still controlled by the National Forest. There's no planned development. As long as the federal government, our president and Congress leave that federal land, it'll stay as a National Forest. There's no, being annexed in the city has no impact on that, which is why they come out neutral on this. They don't support or not support this. They're just, it's just another layer out there, but there's no zoning. Might help us with a little bit, help them with enforcement and some other partnerships, but I think our partnership right now with the National Forest is great. The ranger out there, Amy, can't believe I just forgot her last name, but.
Tenderhold.
Tenderhold, thank you. You know, we work well through the Verde Front and all those other places. So there's no change to the National Forest through this annexation. And then I just want to add to the state land, the state trust land, they only will allow annexation if we help increase the value for sale. So as our development director, Scott Ellis, alluded to, this is for the schools, this is for education. And so they are mandated to increase value to that land. And so we did put in an annexation request, and that was turned down because we have no way to add any real value right now. Part of that is a master plan development or something like that, where we would work hard, knowing this council, if it were to come to fruition, to create open space and partnerships for trails and water and all those wonderful things that make our Verde Valley great. But part of the way we can add value is through a central utility system. So as you know, on that side, there's no, outside of Verde-Santa Fe, there's no, when you go up 89 and Vine project, up outside the 10 square miles all the way up to Spring Creek, there's no centralized water and there's no centralized sewer. So this project, if it comes to fruition, again, long road, down the road there, but part of the reason we support this is the ability to those people all to work together, whether it be 89 and Vine project, or the church that's out there, or the Barowskis or whoever, work together to create a centralized water system and sewer system, which I, you know, helps the environment. We do a great job here in Cottonwood about putting the water back in and recycling the water and using it smartly and those kinds of things. But for that annexation of state land, getting a way to add value at very little cost to the city is our goal here.
Could you go into a little bit of history on how it is that we own property out there? And as well as a little bit of history too on the state trust annexation attempts by the city? There's not many on council that were here at that time. I was, but I think, and I believe Ruben Hodig was. If you could go into some history on that, that would be, I think, helpful for those in the audience.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and council, I will defer that water question to, is Tom still here? Tom Whitmer, our utilities director. But as far as state land goes, we have made a couple attempts to annex that or at least see what the state felt about that. Several years back, there were some letters sent. At that time, it's my understanding that they were not receptive to annexation. So we didn't really get any response. It has been on the city's radar, though, in the general plan for the growth areas to eventually grow out that way. And as Mr. Corbin alluded to, we recently did send another letter to the state land department, and they have turned us down at this time because of the lack of services out there that would increase the value to that. Does that answer your question?
Yes. I think it's just good to have some context of the history of that state trust lands. Thank you.
It is. I've got some experience with that.
Yeah, please.
Oh, so I do have some experience with the application process with state trust lands. And it might be decades down the road, but eventually, somebody's going to come along and petition the state to auction that off, and they're going to develop it. So all of that blue land, and I said, it might be 30, 40, 50 years from now. It will finally come up for development, and the state will sell it. That's what that land is slated for. And you're right, most of it does go to schools. There's some other things that it goes for, but that's its purpose, and it will eventually accomplish that.
And Mr. Mayor and council, I'd like to throw out there too, that we do have some state trust land already within the city, and that part of their response indicated that nothing has happened on that land yet, and that's kind of what they gauged this new annexation on as well.
Down our lower southern border, correct?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, out near 260, just like the problem with this area, a lack of water and sewer. Talking to our utilities director today about, you know, moving forward with that land, we probably can get water out there, but getting a central sewer system is going to be more difficult. There are other possibilities, but we really don't want a repeat of the Verde villages where there's a bunch of septic tanks out there. I mean, that is one of the city's goals, is to prevent a bunch of septic tanks. Don't think that's very good for the environment either, so. But that, you know, we look for grants, and we look for development opportunities with private partners, and we keep that on our radar. But if Mr. Whitmer is still here, he is, he's not, he was not prepared for tonight, so, but I'm sure he'll be able to answer your question, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Tom Whitmer. I'm the utilities director. And you'd asked the question about some of the history on the actual purchase of the well and storage reservoirs were out there. Yes. It's an interesting, interesting story. We were approached by Spring Creek Ranch sometime back to actually supply water to the proposed development of Spring Creek Ranch at that point in time. Now, given its location, it doesn't seem very logical or practical that we even consider something of that nature that far outside the city, but there are certain provisions and characteristics of that land that were very enticing to us, as well as the location of it in proximity to state trust land. In other words, there are surface water rights associated with the Spring Creek Ranch, and that is very enticing to us, as you are all aware. With the adjudication going on, it's to our advantage to put in our water portfolio as many surface water rights as possible to potentially use as a bargaining chip should the adjudication come down and put limitations or restrictions on our current pumping from our existing wells. So we looked at this as a win-win on several different levels. One, we had access to some potential surface water rights that were there that we could have acquired. Two, because of its location and because of our interest in those 10 sections of state land, we felt that by acquiring this, this could be a potential water source for those lands if and when those lands were to become developed and if the city were to annex them into the city. There is a, there are approximately three wells that are located on there. We own one of those, as well as the storage reservoir, and those were all put in, and that's what we ultimately ended up purchasing. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to expound upon that. There was also, if I may, with regard to state trust land, we did have numerous public outreach meetings related to the development of that, just when I started with the city nine years ago. We went through numerous public meetings trying to come up with a master plan of how that would be developed, because there has been interest for that long in those 10 sections. Those 10 sections are realistically the last large plot of private land in the valley that can be developed. And the last thing the city was looking to do is end up with another Verde Village situation where it has been no sewer, private wells, septic systems, all different, a whole array of different types of water characteristics that we didn't want to see again. The Verde Village is interesting in that we supply water, but we don't get any return from the effluent that's generated out there. That's all gone to septic. So we looked at the state trust land as being an area that if it was going to be developed, we wanted it to do, it to be done in such a way that we could potentially have some say in how it would be developed out with regards to the utilities mostly. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
No, I appreciate that. And we did have a master development plan. It was pretty, pretty robust, really, as I recall to.
A lot of open space.
Yeah, a lot of open space. All right. Any questions for Mr. Whitmer?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Wildon.
If I should wait, let me know. Let's say we do annex it, and it is approved, what is the city's obligation from that point on? If we just annex it at this point?
That's a million-dollar question. At this point, we have the well out there. We have not sat down with the Barowskis yet and finalized any type of, of an agreement, either formally or informally, to address the water. They would love for us to supply the water side of the equation because we have the well that's out there. We'd be interested in that. As far as the sewer side, the discussions thus far, which, like I said, have been very informal, would be that they would develop a system similar to like 89 and Vine, and we potentially could be the managers or operators of that system.
Let's just say we annex it, period.
Nothing yet.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add, if we annex it, it doesn't change all of the bargaining that has to go on. It doesn't change the equation. Water service is not confined to city boundaries and those kinds of things. It's a whole different set of rules. So it really doesn't change, those negotiations would still have to occur, and we'd still have to come to an agreement.
But there is that 10-year period that we have to provide police and fire, correct?
We have to come up with a 10-year plan.
If we don't know what's going to happen.
Right. Well, we would base the plan on what we would expect to happen.
Yeah.
What we'd like to happen as well. Yeah, I don't think it really commits us to anything at this point in time simply by annexing it. We have to develop a plan to address those questions that you're talking about.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Ellis? All right. Council, would you like to have some public comment at this point? Would you like to have a brief discussion? Would we like to have the applicant come up and make a presentation? Ms. Barowski, welcome.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, members of the council. Thank you for having me this evening. The true owner of the property, Eric Barowski, is not here. I'm his daughter, of course, and he sends his regrets for not being able to attend. I don't have the slides for you, but I know you've heard the history of how we got here, and it originated really, going back to how this subject came to us. It was actually suggested to us by a member, an elected member of the Board of Supervisors, that we consider discussing annexation with the city. That's a little-known fact, but at the time, we didn't realize, you know, how plausible that would be, and we were going through the county process. As you may know, we've been on hold with the county with our zoning application now for, I guess March was our expected hearing, and due to their policy related to COVID, they pushed our P and Z hearing to August and then September, and it's currently slated for September 19th. However, we were recently informed that it could be pushed as far as November and perhaps further at this point. So we are available to explore options at this point. Just to be clear, that application is still present in the county pending, you know, a few things, a few variables that come out of this discussion. As part of our development process and application with the county, of course, provision of water was a. water was a, an important issue, as is wastewater treatment, both of which we've had dialogue with the City of Cottonwood as being the most reasonable partner in, in those two utilities. As you just heard, and as you well know, you own the water tank out there, and the water that would be provided, presumably, we visited with you some six months ago, maybe less, on that topic. And it's our expectation that, that we would be a customer of the City of Cottonwood for water. It's also in the, in the, looking at the interest, the overarching interest of the Verde Valley and this area, it's our goal to create a, an environmental impact that's a plus. So we have been looking closely at all of our available options for wastewater treatment. And the natural best fit for that, of course, we were slated and were included in our application at the county, was a self-sustaining package plant onsite. We don't want to be in the business of operating a water company or a wastewater treatment company, a utility like that. So we are looking to collaborate and partner with a municipality, specifically Cottonwood. So we've been in discussions on those two very critical components to our project for quite some time, really, almost since the origination of our application a year ago. And through discussions and, you know, just getting to know each other, and, and also really what the city brings to the table for us in terms of planning, expectations, as you progress, you've talked about the state land. We're well aware of your, your prior application and your intentions, and ideally, how that would play out. So we'd love to be a part of it. We've had a great experience working with your city staff and meeting with all of you. What isn't apparent from the city's proposal is really the economic impact that we'll have as well. I've got a couple of figures here, and I don't want to put the cart before, cart before the horse, but in terms of your joint shared revenue number, you're well aware of what individual residents of the city add to your, your base, revenue base from those numbers. But on top of that, we anticipate, I know you were, you've had the opportunity to view our, our PAD, our PAD proposal, that is, has been pending before the county when we came before you and discussed the water provision. So as a reminder, we are proposing 1,500 single-family units, if they were to be manufactured homes, which that is an either-or at this point for us, either traditional construction or manufactured homes. But sales tax from $100,000 residential sale at 3.5% would, of course, be $5.25 million to the city. And in terms of originating sales tax, when you look at the landlot lease rent, monthly rental at 1,500 units times 650 a month, that at 3.5%, which would, we understand, be the commercial rate applicable to that use, that's $34,000 a month, and over $400,000 a year in, in rental revenue, sales tax revenue to the city. Apartments at 3% sales tax, rental sales tax, we're proposing 400 units at $1,200 a month. That's another $14,400 a month, over 100, nearly $173,000 a year. We have other uses proposed, which is an assisted living facility, 200 beds, so that would, of course, be a significant use. We don't have the, the rates available for that, because our intention is to collaborate and partner with a, an operator that's very well skilled and versed in, in that type of management. But that's a significant source of revenue for the city as well. And then we have food and beverage onsite and a store, as well as up to 200 RV spaces. So adding all, all of that together, as you can see, it's a significant sales or tax revenue impact to the city. Now, we, we also provided, I don't think we did this when we originally met with you, but we, we've done kind of a, a projected economic impact to the area, and we're looking at creating 90 or more jobs onsite. We'll be using, of course, local trades and suppliers, as well as working with local realtors in the area. Taxable personal property, I already went over that. Projected construction costs, $50 million by the time it's all said and done. This, our proposal, our project will likely take somewhere between four to seven years to fully build out, maybe longer. Of course, that depends on market conditions and how the, you know, a lot has changed, but how the, how everything unfolds coming out of the crisis that we've been involved with. Annual payroll, if you use a number of $35,000 per year per employee, that's $3.2 million a year in payroll. Of course, the standard times seven, or seven times that economic impact to the local community, $22 million you're looking at. And as the key commercial hub in the Verde Valley, I think that, that certainly rolls over generously to the city of Cottonwood. So we're delighted to be here. We really would love to be part of Cottonwood. We, we think there's lots of reasons. On top of which, philosophically, the county, counties in general aren't, aren't designed, really, for planning and development. That's how municipalities become in existence. So I think, at least, that's my personal opinion. So I think it's a really good fit for us, and I think it's a benefit to the city. And I'll take any questions that you have.
All right, thanks, Ms. Borowski. Do we have any questions for Ms. Borowski?
Just a quick one. You're looking at 90 employees?
Yes.
They wouldn't all get $35,000 a year.
No, it would vary. Some would have more. For example, you know, the general manager of the community would be far more, perhaps the landscape crew member would be far less.
All right. Any other questions for Ms. Borowski? All right.
Thank you.
He has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Pardon me. You said you're proposing 1,500 single-family homes. Are those stick-built, manufactured? What kind of homes are you talking?
In our current proposal, that's been pending before the county. It's an either-or option. Currently, we're also looking at another use, as you may know that Yavapai College is involved or just launched a 3D construction program. So we're also looking at a product like that as well. Initially, I believe we'll start with manufactured homes, because that's what's readily available, and given the shortage on trades and, you know, skilled labor that you can get to build that many houses as, as we go, but we're open, we're open to looking at the best product. But critical to our, our plan is that we stay in that price point, 100,000 or thereabout, as, as an entry-level product there.
Okay, so the product would be 100,000 for the unit, is that correct?
Yes, that's a starting point.
Excuse me. Would they, would the purchaser of that unit own the property, or would he be leasing it?
No, it has been a land lease model from the inception of our proposal, and it remains a land lease model. And when I was going over the economic impact of the sales tax revenue that would be generated, that's the 650 a month, that's the land rent.
Okay. And then what would the monthly payments on the unit itself be approximately?
It depends on your financing. It would depend on someone's credit score, you know, it's just when you go to get financed on that. I think it's another 600 a month or thereabout.
So approximately $1,200 to $1,300 a month for either the apartments or for the single-family units, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Borowski?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, counsel, we can have some discussion, or we can go ahead and hear from the public there here.
I would prefer to hear from the public.
Okay, great. All right, friends, this is going to be a little tricky, because a lot of you are outside yet, and so I have a, a large stack here, and we got staff in the back to kind of help guide folks forward. Like I said, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold folks to two minutes. I'd really appreciate it if you could all keep your comments to that timeframe. And again, if you're, if, if something's already been said that you don't feel needs to be repeated, but you want to let us know on which side you stand, by all means, come up and just say your name. We'd appreciate if you let us know where you live. We don't need your address, but just within which community, and just say, I'm opposed or I'm in favor. We'd appreciate that, and we'll try to get, to hear from everybody this evening. And as you all know, if, if this does move forward, there's going to be many more opportunities, not the least of which would be a general plan amendment, which is kind of a big deal. So there's going to be a lot of other opportunity for folks to participate. And just anecdotally, I recall when the county supervisors were in this same position, I remember thinking, boy, I'm sure glad I'm not there. And here I am. So this is a hot-button item. It gets people very passionate. I would just ask everyone to be very respectful, please, and I don't want to vilify anyone in the room, but, you know, we all need to be, be mindful that we are still one community at the end of the day, and just please, let's, let's focus on the proposable force, which is an annexation discussion, and let's all try to be respectful of one another. I appreciate it very much. So we're going to begin with Peggy Ann Novick. Are you in the room? Great. Sorry.
Thank you for letting me speak. I appreciate it, and I actually really appreciated all the explanation about the state land and the forest land. That was very informational, so thank you. I live off of Oak Creek Valley Road, which is that little snake of a road there, right before Spring Creek Ranch, and frankly, this is terrifying us. And I know that it terrifies my neighbors and all of the Cornville community, and as you know, we've been fighting this passionately for over a year now. And there's a reason that the, that the planning and zoning did not approve this, and I urge you, I won't say anything about the project, because I know you want to stick to annexation, but I urge you really to do your homework on this. It's very, very important. You're asking questions that you really should already know about this. These, this, this project is, is huge, and it's going to be a gigantic impact on that 89A corridor and also the residents of the area. And we're, we're totally against any change to the current zoning. So we really would appreciate you looking into that. But as far as the annexation is concerned, and I know that you think like business people, because that's what you are, but that is open space, and you've talked about open space, and this area, it, open space is important to this area. This, this is a tourism area, and we really need to, to focus on that and, and not overdevelop the area. We're already learning some lessons from that, and I would urge you just to reconsider this annexation. We are opposed to that, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Novick. Appreciate it. All right, up next is Virginia Brian. And one other thing I didn't, I didn't mention, but when you're done speaking, because we do have folks outside, if you could kindly give up your seat, we would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Appreciate your time. I live in Oak Creek Valley, I'm Virginia O'Brien. One of the things I want you to consider when you're talking about this annexation is that I'd be afraid we'd be at Prescott Valley down the road. Not now, of course, but also, our concern is about the Spring Creek and the amount of property for the size that they want to put in for the residents. And you're aware that it was already approved at two acres for Spring Creek Ranch, and to have that changed would be terrifying for all of us. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for being here. Appreciate it. Okay, next is, I can't read this, it's Don Hoon? No, I don't think so. Hoon, is it Hoon? Excuse me, sir, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilman. I didn't come prepared, so this may ramble for two minutes. I'm a developer consultant and a builder. I've been in Cottonwood, I live in Cornville, I live down Oak Creek Valley Road, I've been there for 20 years. But I've been working in Cottonwood for 30 years. I love this valley. I love the Verde Valley. And I'm concerned, you know, I came out of Scottsdale when Scottsdale expanded, and they, they expanded because they wanted to capture land for future growth. They almost broke them. They bought the Planet Ranch on the Colorado River for water, so, so they could have water exchanges. And it damaged Scottsdale severely. I'm not certain that Cottonwood's ready to accept that much open land. There's squatters up there, even though you're being told that you don't have responsibilities, you do, it's your city limits. The reason why Spring Creek Ranch wants this is because they can't get PAD zoning. So if you annex it, they expect you to give them PAD zoning. That means they can put 6,000 people on that 280 acres. That's, that road, 89A, is a scenic corridor. That's what's bringing people to Cottonwood. That's what's bringing people to Sedona. That's our livelihood. Don't destroy it just for the benefit of one developer. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. All right, next we have Mr. Ronald Radocia.
Good evening. My name is Ronald Radocia. I'm a Clarkdale resident, former mayor of Clarkdale, an architect, and have lived here for almost 50 years. I've seen growth, I participated in the growth of this valley for many, many years in my practice of architecture. And what is being proposed here, I am opposed to. I feel that the Spring Creek Ranch subdivision is a farce, and that the density that they're proposing is impossible without completely devastating that property. I've looked into it very deeply. We've spent time in my office looking at their site plan. I've sent a site plan to you, Tim. I sent it to Tom as well, and I am saying to you that they can only get about 240 homes, no matter what the construction is, on that property with slopes less than 6%. They're proposing their city, their town center on property that's 15% slope. It's impossible to build it there. So the sub, the, the finances that Lisa spoke to you about, I think, are completely false. And if this is motivation for you to annex 11 square miles to connect to that small leg of land, that 280 acres, I think you're being completely fooled, and my experience tells me that. I'm a lead accredited architect. All my work is sustainably oriented, and this proposal of annexation is not sustainable. It's not sustainable to this valley and for the people who live here. You're encouraging the development of that state trust land by annexing around it in that horseshoe shape. It's just going to promote it in, in, in years to come, and there's good reason for it.
Mr. Radocia, I'm really sorry, your, your time is up.
I could keep going, Tim.
Yeah, thanks for being here, sir. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right. Up next, we have Jim Collins.
Thank you for letting me be here. I didn't come prepared, but I got a few notes. My name is Jim Collins. I'm from Cornville. I live off of Oak Creek Valley Road, so a lot of these are my neighbors, and we're all pretty much bound together to stop this project, because it's not, it's not doable. It really isn't doable. The proposed annexation, like Randy said, that, that's ridiculous to go around the horseshoe like that to get to that little property. You guys are being taken. Also, this is truly a scenic area and this is the lifeblood of the Verde Valley and Sedona, is the 89A corridor. We can't destroy that. We're going to destroy our livelihoods. I take offense with the statement made by Mr. Corbin here in the paper where he says, "It's a jump for sure, but it's one I support. We have no property tax in Cottonwood. We need to be able to develop our commercial corridor along State Route 89A and we can do that better if we address our workforce housing needs." First of all, that commercial corridor does not belong to Cottonwood. It belongs to the people of Verde Valley, the state of Arizona. And it's up to us to use that corridor wisely for the best benefit of everybody involved. I don't feel you have a right to develop that area to increase your tax money. There's other ways you can take care of your tax money. Do, you know, annexing that area is going to bring a lot of problems for you. Spring Creek Ranch is not offering workforce housing. That housing is going to be above the level of anybody that is considered workforce needing here in this area. It's going to bring in, even according to the Spring Creek Ranch people, the Boroskis, three quarters of that's going to be retired people. Rest of that's probably going to be people that use those as second homes. That's not what we need in this community. If you need workforce housing, let's build workforce housing. There's plenty of areas around the city of Cottonwood we can do that. And then development is going to make the Boroskis rich by renting that land. They don't care about that. They gave you a big spiel here just a minute ago about how much money you're going to make, but it's them that are going to make the money. And that's not going to benefit either Cottonwood, Cornville, or any of the homeowners that get suckered into buying out there because they're not going to own their own land.
Mr. Collins, sorry, sir. That annoying beep was your, your two minutes. Sorry, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. All right, next is Jennifer Richards. We'll see if she's outside. And in the meantime, is Susanna Sophia Hart with us? Hope I got that right.
Mr. Mayor, if I can interrupt real quick. If the speakers could make sure they're standing close enough to the speaker, so the farther you get away, you kind of break up and I want to make sure we get a good recording.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. This is a wrong project in the wrong place. Our community has been going to meeting after meeting trying to express our voices to the Boroskis. They do not care. They do not want to listen to anyone in this community. And Lisa has told me that she doesn't care and dismissed me many times. I really want to share from my heart that I live in Oak Creek Valley. You have to drive by Spring Creek on the other road. There is one road out of Oak Creek Valley for all of our residents. There is a danger in a fire because we are down in a valley. We don't have the infrastructure, the roads, or anything to support this. And it is a wildlife corridor and it breaks all of our hearts. So I have a petition at home for the other meetings we're going to when we resume those with everyone in the community, except one couple who also told me they're against it. Everybody signed it in the entire community against this project. Also, I have another petition of 3,200 people who signed it for the whole Verde Valley that will also go to the meeting. That was on change.org. It is really breaking my heart because this is a rural community with a rural lifestyle. This is putting a city right next door to my house, an entire city. So I hope you will really look at this carefully, listen to the heart, the people of this community. I really, really would appreciate that and thank you so much for your time. Good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. Appreciate it. Did Jennifer Richards make it back in or did she, she's out? Okay. Jason Horton? Jason Horton, I think I'm getting that right. Okay. Daniel Holland?
Hello, I'm Daniel Holland. I've lived in the Verde Valley about 36 years. I just want to make a few points. Sorry if I'm repeating what's being said, but I feel it's important. This development would bring in thousands of homes, RV park, a nursing home, stores, a fire department, I hear. Number two, number three, this annexation, you say that unless the federal government approved it, there is no possibility of stores and strip malls along 89A between Sedona and Cottonwood. Well, what if they did approve it? It's happened before. It can happen again. And just like with the 260, I see a strong possibility of that being totally developed. There's also, when they built Verde, not Verde Village, Verde Santa Fe, we ran out of water a few times. You even have water advisory if you run out of water at, along Cornville Road. So what's going to happen when the, I'm sorry, the developers' projection is 6,000 people, 6,300 people build out, I've heard them say. What's going to happen with that? Also, all the thousands and thousands of vehicles that are going to be on our road, thousands of more vehicles to support these people. Many of these people have two vehicles. Also, this area, as I understand it, was zoned, one house per two acres and they want to get thousands of people on 200 acres. It just, it's just ridiculous. And I guess that's about it. I just think this is totally out of character for this area. And I urge you to reject the annexation because that's a way that they feel like they can build here and it just doesn't work. You know, if you look at it, listen to what the architect told you and other people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Holland. Appreciate it. Sherry Ratner?
Mr. Mayor, if I can interject one more time. It looks like everybody's inside, so people that want to stay till the end can feel free to stay. It looks like everybody's in.
Okay, thank you.
I live in Oak Creek Valley. I've been here for 25 years. Like most people who live here, I moved here for open space and most of you moved here for open space. If you go through with this annexation, you're going to destroy open space because once one development goes in, like Spring Creek Ranch, it's a domino effect and other developers will come in and it'll get approved and you'll ruin this whole beautiful area. This is a rural area and should not be changed. In our country, rural areas are disappearing every day. If you can't have a rural area here in northern Arizona, where can you go in this country? Open space cannot happen with the kind of density that Spring Creek Ranch is proposing. Negative environmental impact of such a dense community in this area would destroy the quality of life for everyone here, including the people in Cottonwood, the traffic, the crime. And remember, these homes, people don't own the property. It could end up just like Sedona Shadows where double whites are being given away because the carrying charges are over $1,000 and they're more than the mortgage for the, for the double whites. So this could end up just a terrible disaster or it could end up like, like Oak Creek Estates with a lot of crime and drug addicts and all kinds of things. This is not workforce housing. This is not affordable housing. Too much density would destroy the quality of life here for everybody. And I hope that you all realize that because where can you go after here? I know people who moved away and they came back because where can you find this kind of lifestyle anywhere in this country? Think about that before you, if you annex something, it can't be undone. If a development is built, it can't be undone. We have something very, very special here. Don't let it be destroyed. I searched this whole country before I came here. I've been escaping from developers since I was seven years old. I grew up in a rural area. By the time I went to high school, it wasn't a tree left. The forest I walked in when I went to school was gone.
Ms. Ratner, I'm really sorry, but your time's up. Thanks for being here this evening. Mr. Volkman, are you with us this evening? Ron Volkman? Set him aside. Maybe he'll be back in. Mark and Nancy Brady? Mark and Nancy Brady? Mandy Worth, evening.
It's a pleasure to be at one of your meetings. It's been a while. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mandy Worth, Jerome Town Council. As the full council has not had an opportunity to discuss this topic in open meeting, I'm simply representing myself and the constituents who have requested that I speak on their behalf as they're unable to come down the hill because the road is closed. I will also do my best to limit my comments to annexation at the mayor's request. I recognize our charge as elected officials to hear all requests from the public in a fair and equitable manner. I also recognize the extreme housing crisis we face here in the Verde Valley, which has hit us hard in the past several years, especially our workforce, including first responders, educators, service workers, and even ourselves, most of whom couldn't afford to live in the proposed development. I know I couldn't. Annexation is not something to be entered into lightly. It takes careful consideration of the practical consequences and costs. Any additional revenue needs need to be viewed in balance with additional costs. To accommodate a landowner six miles away from current city limits does not an argument for annexation make, especially when it triggers the consideration of such a large area essentially doubling the size of the city and is laid out in a way to avoid negotiations on the state trust land. As the proposed annexation includes a large tract of national forest land and the important riparian area of Spring Creek, consideration of the environmental impact cannot be understated. Game and Fish has noted the development in the area would create substantial impacts on sensitive, threatened, and endangered species on site and downstream, and the potential for harm is real and significant. In closing, I'm not against growth, but it must be well-vetted, sustainable, and appropriate for our small town and rural lifestyle. The proposed annexation in its current format and subsequent possibility of rezoning and high-density development is unfit for the area of discussion and the Verde Valley as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Worth. Appreciate it. All right, next is Burget Lowenstein? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Burget Lowenstein and I live in unincorporated Yavapai County in the vicinity of Sedona. Honorable City Council members and City Manager, I am against the annexation. I agree with just about everything everybody has said, especially with remarks of the lady from Jerome because she was the first one to highlight the environmental importance of the Spring Creek Ranch land. And the Boroskis are well aware of that and they appreciate it and they have done very well in supporting the protection of that land. But a land such an environmental gem straddled by development of 4,000 people is not going to be a gem for a very long time anymore. So please consider that aspect, the environmental importance of the land. Also, I want to bring out that we have to consider the economic consequences of the pandemic for the whole region here, the importance of climate change and its implications for the Verde Valley's economy, environmental conditions, and the consequences of those conditions. The mega drought we are in the middle of and its effect on the regions, its effect on the region's most important but also most fragile asset, namely its water resources. And the sustainability of such a giant leap in growth, is that sustainable at all with all the announced of the future? Also, I want to stress that the, we need a regional land use plan for the Verde Valley. And before such a land use plan has come into existence, it would be best to have a moratorium on developments of that size. I think that was my alarm clock, right?
It was, yes.
That I heard?
Yep. Good morning.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Lowenstein. Appreciate, appreciate your time. Thank you. All right, Dr. Consordi?
Thanks for giving me a voice. I just wanted to briefly paint a picture. I live in Cottonwood only for about two and a half years. I moved here because I love it. I remember when I visited Sedona first time in 1971, quaint little town, beautiful tumbleweeds, scenic, one of the wonders of the world, as we all know. The next time I went out to Sedona was in the early 1990s, 20 years later, and they turned it into Disneyland with stores all over the place, thousands of cars, noise, traffic, pollution, a bunch of baloney. And I almost cried when I saw it. And this is a quality of life issue for Cottonwood. Are we going to stand up for keeping the purity of what we have in Cottonwood or are we looking at money? If we're talking about 1,500 homes, two cars, that's 3,000 cars driving around, four people per home, that's 6,000 people, 200 RVs, at least one car, maybe two cars per RV, 200 to 400 cars, another 400 people, assisted living, 200 beds. You have hundreds of workers plus the people. My total's here, with the new math, 7,000 people, approximately 4,000 cars driving around in one of the most scenic areas of the world. I don't want to turn Cottonwood into what happened to Sedona. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, we have three folks that were outside. I don't know if they've come in or not, but we'll go ahead and see if Brady has come back. Mark, Nancy Brady? Mr. Volkman, Ron Volkman, or Jason Horton? Okay, they're all have left. All right, thank you, folks, very much. Appreciate your.
Mayor?
Yes.
We have one more. Jerro Peterson?
Okay. Evening.
Hi, I'm Jerro Peterson and I live in Jerome. And I came in this area in 1989. It was gorgeous and the development has been quite substantial. And I believe these many houses and putting that much impact in that small part of that land would affect the environment very negatively and the animals, and I'm opposed.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for being here. And like I was saying, thanks to everyone who made the time to be here tonight. And like I said, if this does move forward, there's going to be many more opportunities for the public to engage with this council. Doesn't limit anyone from emailing us, calling us at any time, stopping us at the grocery store, et cetera. So thanks again for being here and appreciate everyone being so respectful. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just add, echo that. I've been with the city a year and a few months, eight or nine months now, so I'm not new anymore. And for a controversial issues, this is the most respectful any group has ever been since I have been here. And we've had several controversial issues in my short tenure. And so I do kudos to the, to the respectful disagreement and respectful expression of their opinions. It was noticeable and appreciated tonight.
Thank you. All right, council, so bears mentioning too, so 130 emails that came through today. And I believe that all of these were in opposition, correct? There's not one that was in favor of? Okay.
No, Mr. Mayor, I have to correct. That is incorrect. There was one in favor of annexation, opposed to the development.
Okay. All right, then we got 16 calls as well that came into your office in opposition. Okay, and then, oh, so Mr. Volkman wasn't able to make it. He did leave a question for us, so I'll go ahead and read this out for, question for city staff and council. State law has, I think we answered this earlier, but state law has a requirement about dimensions of any annexation having length not more than twice the width. Two questions, why not annex a state trust land, which prior Cottonwood city councils have said would be a high priority instead of all the national forests? This configuration would still meet the state requirement. This council might as well give the state land department a signal of the importance of this land to the city. There's no harm in annexing it. Two, has council thought through the potential unexpected cost liabilities, logistical conflicts, and aspects of annexing and thus owning a multilateral responsibility with federal agency, US Forest Service, and Department of Agriculture? There will be countless-- There will be countless hours of staff time, police calls, city resources spent on trying to manage land that is barely manageable by the U.S. Forest Service. Maybe you shouldn't go there. And that's again from Ron Volkman. All right, and that covers that. So did you have something that you wanted to say?
Oh, no, sir. I thought you said you had a question.
Okay. So let's open it up then for discussion, council, and see what kind of direction we can give staff at this time.
I'll be second.
You'll be second. All right. Well, I'll give just a brief history on where I've stood in the past with the big annexation, which is that state trust land. Cottonwood's a small city. We're only 12,600 and so strong, and we're surrounded, not surrounded, but we're bordered by the Verde Villages, which is an unincorporated community. Is most in the room, I'm sure, no? But unincorporated community that borders us. Most of the residents out there believe that they are Cottonwood residents, but in fact, they are not. They're in the county. And though I appreciate those neighbors very much, what concerns me about that community specifically is that we've never been able to control, and by "we" I mean "we" as a community, as a community, the resources that are used out there. So essentially, we deliver water to most of the villages, but we don't get to reclaim any of that water. So the villages rely 100% on septic tanks, and that's a real problem from my perspective. They outnumber us in population. They're over 13,000 just in the villages. So they outnumber us in population, but though we deliver water to them, we don't get any of that water back. Whereas here in Cottonwood, I think we reclaim close to 70% of the water that we deliver. Why that's important is because we can then direct, inject that back into the aquifer. We recycle that water again and again, and we have a much less impact on the environment than the surrounding communities do. So I think Cottonwood historically has done a really good job managing its resources. So when I look at that state trust land, I've always been in favor of that being within the municipal control of the city of Cottonwood, because that puts that in the control of the residents of Cottonwood. And I know that we would do as good a job as possible managing those resources out there. So, you know, when my grandfather came here during the Depression, there were hardly any folks here at all. My dad grew up in Glendale. It was a community of 15,000 people. So I've experienced a lot of growth here, being born and raised in Arizona. But I always remember the stories that my dad and grandpa would tell about how this community, this state, has changed a lot. And I know it's extremely difficult to face that, extremely hard to live through that and see it, because this is a beautiful place, and we certainly don't want it to ever be anything but that beautiful place we all either moved to or have grown to love here. So however, that's why I've always been in favor of that state trust land being within control of the city of Cottonwood. So our track record for annexation has been good in terms of taking a development from the county and crafting it as something that better suited Cottonwood. And a good example of that, although there's nothing coming out of the ground yet, would be 89 and Vine. They've certainly gone through a lot of different iterations on what that proposal would look like. But when it came over to the city from the county, it was a proposal that had a lot more homes, housing units in it, and it had a golf course and other things that just didn't fit our vision for the city. So we were able to work closely with that developer and still are working closely with that developer through different iterations. And now with wine, of course, being a theme, you know, they've renamed it to 89 and Vine. So we're still continuing to work. But bottom line is, we've always kept our eye on managing the resources as carefully as possible to protect our future. So I think we've done a good job on any proposal that we've taken over from the county. And the Spring Creek Ranch proposal, there are many things about it that I am not too excited about, to be honest with you. So I have some questions for staff after I'm done here. But at the end of the day, I think we all recognize that those sections of state trust land will at some point be developed. It may not be in our lifetime. And here in Arizona, by God, we love our private property rights. And it would be foolish of us to think that we... That that private property, that those hundreds of acres, wouldn't be developed to some fashion. How that's developed, I think, is for, you know, it'll open for community discussion. But at some point, it will be developed. And it's important to think that we work hard to negotiate as a community, with the development community, to make sure that it fits what we really need moving forward into the future. And along those lines, there are many things that are in the works now. COVID has certainly stalled a lot of these efforts, but we do have a housing study that we're working with Sedona. And this study's going to help us identify what the real housing needs are in the community. I know the Borowski's have stated that their intent is to provide workforce housing. I think a study like this is going to help us really identify what that means so we can better suit that bill. And in addition to that, one of the offshoots of the Verde Front, which is a multi-agency planning group that meets quarterly, one of the spinoffs of that was, again, COVID has disrupted a lot of this, is a discussion on exactly, I heard a woman speak on it, the regional land use plan. And so there's some things that are working in parallel with this and have been working in parallel for a while that I think can help address some of the concerns we have moving forward. But it is definitely a leap, and I understand that. But I think it's... If there is a community in the area that can work with that development and get it to a position where it protects our natural resources and provides what our community needs, I believe that that would be the city of Cottonwood. And I do believe we have, I know we have many more planning tools in our toolkit, if you will, than the county does. We simply do. And that's the end of my speech.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just add a couple names to the housing study. We partnered with Sedona, but really, they have their study going. We're working our Jerome as a part of that, Clarkdale, Camp Verde, and the county. So I just wanted to not people to think that we've been working with Sedona to figure out the housing, Sedona's housing problems. We're addressing the Verde Valley housing problem by working with all of the local cities and the county government and some private business owners.
Thank you. Any other...? Ms. Wilden? Oh, you said second. That's right.
I'm second. First of all, Spring Creek Ranch does not equal annexation, in my mind, in any way, shape, or form. Am I opposed to Spring Creek Ranch as it is? Absolutely. Do we need affordable housing in the worst way? That is my number-one goal to be on this council, to have affordable housing. We've got doctors at the college, at the hospital, that can't find a place to live. We've got employees that can't find a place to live. And that's just two examples of many. So affordable housing is what I'm all about. What I would like to do is, I agree with the annexation, no problem. I don't see any problem with that. Because it doesn't equal a huge development. It doesn't have to. I'd like to take a tour of that area if this goes forward. I'd like to look into the water issue, the environment, looking more into that. And I also came from a rural area. We used to ranch, believe it or not, and I'm probably the oldest one in here. 24th Street between Camelback and Indian School and 16th Street was our ranch. It was in the middle of nowhere. Now, I wasn't born then, just to give you an idea. And also, we farmed in Glendale, and then we farmed in Levine. These are all rural areas. And they were developed. Levine, not so much, but still, I mean, development's going to happen. So I am all for annexation, assuming we have the control to agree what's going to go in there. Story.
I think I'm landing in a similar position to Councilmember Wilden at this point. Of all of the 100, you know, 100 or so people that we've heard from, every single one of them is against the Spring Creek Ranch development. And I am also not in favor of that development as it stands. So if this were a vote for that, I'd say no.
Right.
And I also want to make sure that we can keep our small-town feel. I live here, and I love it here, because it is a small town. We're not a big city, and we're not Phoenix, we're not Prescott. I received quite a few emails and phone calls from people expressing concern that we would start to look like Prescott when they started to build all those stores and stuff. And we certainly don't want to do that. So it would seem to me that for us to have some control over that, we'd have to own the lands, after talking about developing. Or it'd have to be with not own, but within the city limits so that our planning and zoning would have some, you know, some say over that. And then, of course, the council has the last say on that. So although I'm not 100% sure I'd vote for annexation right now for this, I'm not necessarily opposed to having more information brought back to us on this issue.
All right. Councilmember Holes?
I'm a fourth-generation Arizonan. My home, my first home, was 16th and Van Buren, not far from your ranch. It's still there. I still own it. I've watched Phoenix grow. I can remember when going from there to Mesa was a 45-minute drive each way. Today, you go from Phoenix to Mesa, and you don't know you've entered in another community. I've watched Camp Verde annex, expand property-wise, all across the Verde Valley. I'm watching them develop now on 260, and people are upset about that. And maybe rightfully so, but it's going to develop. The doctor commented that the first time he saw Sedona, I believe, was 1972. In 1972, Sedona was about four times the size it was when I grew up in Flagstaff. When I grew up in Flagstaff, Old Town Sedona was Sedona, where Garland's trading post is. And to La Cappache is where we used to go swimming, to give you an idea of how things have changed in the Verde Valley. I've noticed in the last 25 years that Sedona has continued to build and expand out. Somebody needs to put a stop to it, because at some point in time, I'm afraid they're going to try to come all the way to our northern borders, annexing and building more and more motels, hotels, and what have you. There's two, at least, under construction right now on the south end of Sedona, going in on 89A. I think they have plans for more, and I'm not sure. But I don't know why we need all of that, and I don't know why we need all that tourist traffic driving through our community. I do know that if we do not do something with this, it will be taken over by some other community, whether it be Sedona, Clarkdale, or whomever. And I am concerned that whoever takes it over will not have the same goals that we have, and that is in making sure that whatever we do is in the best interest of all of our people. The annexation as it sits now, or the proposed development, I'm uncomfortable with. I wouldn't agree with that. I did some math, and at 280 acres, at a quarter-acre lot, you'd have 1,120 lots. And 1,500 single-family units is a whole lot more than 1,120 and wouldn't even accommodate all the other amenities that are proposed there. If Borowski's are interested in continuing with the city annexing, I would be interested in pursuing the annexation with the understanding that we would be doing some pretty serious visiting about how it would be developed, and that may or may not affect their desire. But I want to be upfront about that.
Very good. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I read every single email. Haven't had a lot to do. A lot of them mention open land. And, you know, 84% of the state of Arizona is open land, and it's always going to be. We live on these little, tiny islands of private property in the middle of that. If you look at this, we're never going to become Phoenix. We're never going to become Prescott. It just can't happen. All that green land is going to stay green. We only have so much room to expand. And that's going to take decades to build out. That state trust land, it's going to be developed. You're going to see homes, and you're going to see businesses on it. It's just going to happen. Somebody at some point is going to figure out that they can buy that land from the state, and they can develop it, and they can make money. As the mayor said, I'd like to see that eventually, and it'll be long after we're all gone, I'd like to see that eventually end up in control of the city, to have it zoned, to have a plan for that, and to do it right. Development's going to happen. People want to come here and live here. I have clients right now. I can't get them homes. We don't have enough homes for them. They have a right to live here. We can't just shut the door and say, "That's it. I'm in. Nobody else." But we can manage it well. I think right now, if Oak Creek Valley, which sits on Oak Creek, really nice area, if all of those people didn't live there and it was undeveloped, and somebody, whoever owned it, came along and talked about developing it, every single one of them would say no. But yet, they live there. Granted, the density isn't the same as what the Borowski's have proposed. But there's single-family homes, and there's a lot of manufactured homes down there, too, right on the river, the creek. So a lot of that is just really disingenuous. It's just knee-jerk. I don't want development. It's going to happen. We need to do it. I agree that this, we're going to have water and sewer potentially at Spring Creek. We're going to have it down there at 89 and Vine. And that is what is going to be desirable. For anybody that takes that state trust land and wants to develop it, they're going to come to Cottonwood, and it's going to go into Cottonwood. They're going to want our utilities. But we're not talking about density, zoning. We're not talking about a development right now. The Borowski's are taking a risk. There's no guarantee that if we annex this property, they're going to be able to develop it according to their plan. There's no guarantee, and they're taking a risk. Even if they got to develop this plan, there's no guarantee that that's what people are going to want to buy. They're taking a risk. And yes, they're going to make some money. Every business in town is here to make money, and there's nothing wrong with that. So I'm in favor of annexation if they want to take the chance and they want to join the city. I do have one more caveat, and I've talked to them about it, is we spent $850,000 for a well and a tank out there in what we thought were some water rights. And I don't think we really got what we thought we were going to get in water rights. I'd like to wipe the slate clean and start from ground zero. I'd love for them to buy that water back from us and then talk about annexation and talk about development, and wipe that slate clean and start from zero again. It's just me. I don't know if anybody else has thought about that. But I'm all for annexing that. And I think it's also, like Ron says, it's part of the economic future of Cottonwood. I don't think anybody has that necessarily in mind, but that's our job. And we need to think way out into the future and what we're going to do for paying for our roads and our library and our rec center and bus service and all those things. I'd like to move forward with it.
All right, very good. A lot of my colleagues brought some of the same concerns I have. Again, if we move forward with the annexation, we're going to identify what Cottonwood zoning is most close to the current zoning right now of the county, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and bring it in as such, and then move forward through the process. You presented us with a pretty optimistic, aggressive timeline on how that might all come through. But we started out somewhere in the agricultural zone, and we move forward from there, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I think we ought to inquire of Ms. Bronski if she was still interested in annexation based upon what she's heard tonight.
That's fair. Ms. Borowski, given council sentiment up here, how do you feel?
Nothing's changed from our perspective. This is your direction to get started on the analysis. After 30 days of that process, we would be presented with the requirement that we approve and execute the direction from our side. So nothing's changed from our perspective. I enjoyed the comments. You know, I believe we've evidenced through this process we're very much willing to work with not only the elected body, staff, but also the general public. I mean, if there's one thing that has been resounding in this process is we've been complimented by many. They may not agree with exactly what we want to do or even at all with what we want to do, but we have engaged in substantial community outreach. And our goal is to be a neighbor, a partner, and part of the community moving forward. a partner, and part of the community moving forward. So I think you'll find us very willing to work in that regard.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Any other questions for Ms. Brodsky?
I just wanted to be sure you were comfortable if we didn't agree to your plan, and we want to reduce the number of units you would have by a substantial number.
Well, first, we haven't done any sort of presentation on that. We have revised our proposal. I'm not sure when the last time you took a hard look at it, but we look forward to the process, the planning and zoning process, and to a given, you know, a dialogue, and prospectively, a give and take on that. We love input. We want to, you know, be a good partner in this process, and we're planning to make a very nice community, and I think it'd be a very nice community for the city. We've heard, you know, from several architects that believe this, our plan cannot be done on our property, which I, you know, I'm sorry, that's a little frustrating to hear, because we've had, we've had our design team, a professional group of architects and land planners, do the design. So, you know, you get sidetracked with those types of comments, and really, we just have to keep our focus on doing the best community we can, and something that's possible, plausible, and beneficial.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to add to those things, you know, we have different open space requirements than the county does. We have a hillside ordinance that requires some accommodation for hillside. So I think that our planning and zoning team is set up to ensure that we negotiate and bring something back if we decide to move forward that the council can appreciate. So, and again, Mr. Mayor, you said this, I think the city is better suited for negotiating and coming to some agreement that is a compromise that preserves the environment and does the right thing for the Verde Valley, so.
Yeah, thanks for that. Again, yeah, we've, I believe we have a good track record. We are, have long been environmental stewards here in Cottonwood. We have stated values that reflect our desire to preserve the natural environment, and any development that's come through, you know, the hillside ordinance is a great example. That was really born out of the Mesquite Hills development, where we've really fought hard to keep the two hills that gave Mesquite Hills its name, when the developer wanted to take a bulldozer and level those hills. We pushed back and said, no, that's, you can't name it Mesquite Hills if you're going to take the hills away. That's part of the character out there. And so, you know, we've worked really well with our development community and our residents to make sure that we provide progress that fits the character of our community. So I believe this would be no different if we move forward, and I think council, or staff, has its direction. It sounds like, you know, council, though, we share some concerns with the proposed development last we saw it. We are interested in moving forward with the annexation. Am I picking up what you're laying down for you? Okay, great.
Mr. City Attorney, do we need a vote on this?
It was queued up that way.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
You can't move to give staff direction.
Okay.
I'm usually pretty good about reading between the lines, but on something like this, I think it'd be better if we had a clear direction.
Make a motion.
Please.
I move to authorize staff to proceed with the annexation of Spring Creek Ranch and Coconino National Forest Land.
All right, I'll second that. So Councilmember Hulse made the motion, and Mayor seconded it. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mayor Olinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
And folks, this is the start of, I know we were presented with an aggressive timeline. I think it's optimistic. This is the start of a long public process that will take a lot of community input, and here, with this council at least, we're always open to that input, and we appreciate all of you being here. So stay tuned as this moves forward. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is Resolution Number 3068, declaring and adopting the results of the city's primary election held on August 4, 2020.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, the city held its primary election on August 4, 2020, for the purpose of nominating electing candidates to fill the three full-term councilmember seats that will be coming up, and the remaining two years of a four-year councilmember term that was due to a resignation, and as well as the mayor's seat. Per City Ordinance Number 13, any candidate that receives a majority of votes cast, as identified by a formula set forth in state law, is deemed to be elected outright in the primary. Tosca Henry, Jackie Narin, Helen, Helen Kurat, all received the majority of votes cast for the three, four-year term seats, and Debbie Wilden received a majority of votes cast for the two-year term, as well as the candidate, the mayor's seat. Mayor Olinsky received a majority of votes cast to be reelected as mayor. The results of the election are contained in your packet and are being presented to you for approval and acceptance, and once the council approves the resolution, the unofficial results of the primary election then become the official primary election results for the city.
All right. Very good. I'll go ahead and move to accept the final results of the city's August 4, 2020 primary election, as submitted by the Yavapai County Elections Department, and approve Resolution Number 3068, declaring and adopting the results of the election.
Second.
Okay, Mayor made the motion, and Councilmember Wilden seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mayor Olinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thanks.
And I'd just like to make clear for the members of the public and the council that the new councilmember will not take her seat until after the general election, and that's per state law. So we will set a meeting to where the new councilmember and the councilmembers that were reelected after the general election date.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. So if you could, please read Resolution Number 3068 by title only.
Resolution Number 3068, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, declaring and adopting the results of the primary election held on August 4, 2020. The mayor.
Thank you. I move to pay the claims.
Second.
All right, Mayor made the motion, Councilmember Narin seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and I would move to adjourn.
Second.
Mayor made the motion, Vice Mayor eagerly seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
I adjourn. Thank you.[1769.26]